All the beautiful yellows here. Hey, nice beard, Joe. She almost didn't recognize you. All this meeting in order, please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, city attorney, want to report out from closed session, please?
He's not here yet.
Oh. That case.
Can we wait till he comes for that one and just keep moving?
I guess, I guess we're running too fast for him, huh?
We are.
That's what we get for holding them back. Hey, come here, we need to ask you questions. Okay, we'll ask that later. Okay, so adoption of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or otherwise?
I'd like to close in memory of Clay Holstein's mother.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
In memory of Clay's mother.
And for Maria's father.
Yep.
All right. Maria. Our HR director, okay. With those changes, do I have a...
With that, I'll make a motion.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, we have a operating menu here. So, city attorney, want to report out on closed session, please?
Mayor and council, you had two items on for closed session. A claim from Gabor Zabo. And with respect to that matter, the council recommended approval of that claim in the amount of sixteen forty-two oh five, one thousand six hundred forty-two dollars and five cents. The second matter was a claim of Ching Hiu Chin, C-H-I-E-N. And the council made a motion to deny that claim, and that was unanimous.
Okay, very good. So, we have oral communications, number one. This is for any item that is not on the agenda. And Dana, Dana Dilworth, Dana? I'm going to take questions in regards to the soil after the presentation. Do you want to withhold that till then?
Only if it's not part of the presentation.
Only if it's not part of the presentation. How am I going to know that?
Well, only if we can speak during that presentation.
Okay, is that true with you, Michelle, or you want to speak now? Okay, okay, but first slip, I'm sorry, Michelle, first slip I have is Nancy Loxamana. Okay.
Good evening. Honorable council members, my name is Nancy Loxamana. I'm a Brisbane resident. And I want to let you know that my application was accepted to be a member of the Samtrans Citizen Advisory Committee. And I will have a full term through 2021, starting the end of this month. And I'm very excited to represent my fellow bus riders to improve upon services and promote more ridership, be it Samtrans, Caltrain, or the shuttle. As you know, my passion has always been working as a volunteer in our community and from a progressive point of view, supporting our town moving forward with the same core values that you all share. Sustainability, the housing and transportation connection for a healthier town. My belief is that transportation is actually going to be the hot topic of the future. We need to work in ways to address the needs of all of our neighborhoods for residents or workers who are commuters, stay at home by choice or by need, and even our children. What we need more of is options in town to neighboring downtowns and especially transit centers. We have work to do to make transportation a focus, whether they walk, bike, share rides, or use transit whenever possible. The key, of course, is ease of availability. That, I believe, is the biggest hindrance to most people. So with these thoughts in mind, I give you my promise that I will be an active CAC participant. I will bring to you important topics, and if you think, and if I think we need your help to push our town's best interests, I will let you know so that you can reach out to the Samtrans Authority Board or management, many of which I know you know personally. I will also connect with Caroline to make sure the word gets out in the form of more communication. I know you're already doing that with the Get Us Moving survey and campaign. And I want to thank you, Mayor Conway, for your letter of support, my friend and fellow bus rider, and also Citizen Advisory Committee member Sunny Koya of South San Francisco, and Anya Miller for her words of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for volunteering.
Nancy, if you could do this. I just want to say thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and taking on that role. I also know that you've been quite active with trying to get that Samtrans route for our schoolchildren over to Pacifica. And if it's okay through the council, I'd love for you to give us an update on where we are with that.
Well, I was kind of a late person to the movement, since my son's no longer in the school, but I was always active in trying to make sure we had transportation for the high school students. And from my understanding, we have a meeting this Monday at Samtrans, which I'm going to go to with a few of the other mothers and parents that you've all met with. And we really want to thank you, support. You started out in the two-by-two, you're now on the two-by-two. And from what I understand, they do have a solution. And it will be a Samtrans solution, which is the solution we should always have had. Because that is a public service, that is the, you know, the authority that should be providing transportation. And I don't know the results of the meeting, but I'm hoping that it will also help the Bay Shore School District pick up students if they choose Oceana and Terra Nova. I think it's a real win for this northern part of the area. It's going to be cheaper for parents, it's going to be more reliable, and I think it really solves a lot of issues for us.
Great, thank you.
So Nancy, on that meeting that's on Monday, is it Monday the 24th?
This Monday, yeah.
So, so I know it's at the Samtrans building in San Carlos.
Correct.
Do you know a time?
I want to say one or two, but I'd have to...
My mic's off. It's at one.
One o'clock?
But you can call in.
Right.
I'm planning, if I still can, I don't know, I was invited as well. I don't know if that, if, if, if that would not be okay, since it might be three of us, but...
No, no, it won't be, because I'm going to be in, I'm not going to be available Monday.
Okay. Well, I was planning, provided that it was okay for me to give input. I might have to talk to the city attorney about that, but I was thinking about calling in for that, and it's at one.
Yeah, you know, I think I have a conflict, or I have a meeting that goes all the way to one, someplace else. But then I could call in.
You can call in, right. No, I think, as far as I know, it's going to be a very positive outcome, so I'm very, that's very exciting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, Michelle.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I'd just like to invite everyone to come on June 2nd to the mountain plant sale at the Mission Blue Nursery. It's from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I will have plants native for San Bruno Mountain. And we'll have a lecture at 11 o'clock called Flora of the Fog, and how important fog is to the habitat on the mountain. But we have a lot of plants for sun, shade, fog, whatever you need. And although it's not the season to be planting out on the mountain anymore, in your yard and garden, it's the perfect time to plant. So come to the plant sale, June 2nd. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, almost forgot. There's these coupons out on the table, and they're worth $5 off. One per family.
Good value.
Good, good you said the last part.
They'd be taking the stacks.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? All right. Okay, not, oh, yeah, come on forward.
Sorry I put you on the spot, I was going to make the announcement for you, but I was like, you probably know more information than I do.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Daniel Carter, Brisbane resident. And we are getting ready to celebrate the one-year anniversary of G3. And we're going to do it Friday, June 1st, at 5:00. And it's going to be at Madhouse, and everybody in the city's invited. It's going to be a potluck, and it's going to be a great celebration. And we're going to have photos and show the before and afters, and we're very excited about it. And, you know, thank the people that have contributed, included the city council. So it's going to be a really good time. So I'm hoping anybody's invited in town and, you know, get the word out.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
So June 1st and June 2nd, the months starting off with a couple celebrations.
Plants.
Yeah, plants, absolutely. Okay, good. So anybody else want to address the council? Good to see our Public Works here, because you guys are up next, and gals. So it says Public Works Week, so I have a proclamation here. It's a proclamation to the city council, the city of Brisbane, recognizing May 21st to the 27th as Public Works Week. This is the upcoming week. Whereas Public Works Week is a celebration of the dedicated employees who provide and maintain the infrastructures and services collectively known as Public Works. And whereas the theme of National Public Works Week 2018 is the power of Public Works, which gives voice to the impact the many facets of Public Works have on modern civilization. And whereas these impacts include the uninterrupted provision of clean water and disposal of solid waste, of building and repairing roads and bridges, of continuing care of natural and man-made environment, and of devising emergency management strategies to meet natural or man-made disasters. And whereas these critical services are provided daily by professionals who serve the public good with quiet dedication. And whereas it is in the public's interest for citizens and civic leaders to be informed of the substantial contributions made by Public Works to the health, safety, and quality of all our lives. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city council, the city of Brisbane, does hereby proclaim May 21st to the 27th, 2018, as Public Work Week. Randy, I'm sure you'd like to add to this presentation, because...
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I'll give it a shot anyway. So we've talked before about Public Works people and what a special breed they are. And I think probably the best way to explain that is to tell a little story about an incident I observed not too many years ago, where we were at a small town a few hours south of here, and there were dueling conventions going on, as a lot of those communities are set up. And on one side of the street was a hotel that had Public Works people at a convention. And on the other side of the street, it just turned out to be a city manager's office convention. So there were the city managers, their deputies, their clerks, and a city attorney or two here. And one day, as they were breaking for lunch, the Public Works people were getting ready to go to lunch, the folks from the city manager's office that had been in a small session, and apparently it was a team-building session, were walking out to the plaza in front of the convention center. And they had been given an assignment. And the assignment was to figure out how tall the flagpole was. Now, the instructor only gave them two tools to help them with this. He gave them a step ladder, a little two-step step ladder, and this was a tall flagpole. And he gave them a nice 30-foot tape. They thought it was nice, but it was one of those cheaper ones. You know, when you pull it out, you get it up about two feet, and then it wobbles over like a piece of string or wet spaghetti. So, you know, these poor people, these poor city managers, they're doing the very best they can. The Public Works folks are watching this, and they're out there, they're forming a human pyramid, like cheerleaders. They're, they're trying to lift people up on each other's shoulders, but they just, they just can't get it. It just seems like an impossible task. So they finally noticed the Public Works folks, and they're like, hey, you guys are Public Works. Like, yeah, and they explained the dilemma to them. And they think, well, can you help us? And a couple of the Public Works folks walk over, and they're like, yeah, well, okay. And when they notice, they look at the bottom of the pole, that it's actually a breakaway pole. So there's a little locking device on it, they pull out, they kind of steady the pole, they pull the pin out, and then they lift the pole out, and they lay it down on the ground. And they say, we're going to need your tape measure. And they borrow it, and they bring it along, and say, well, your pole is 25 feet tall. They lift the pole back up, put the pin through it, put the lock back on, and off they go to lunch. Well, they turn the corner and go to lunch, and the city manager's office is just, these folks are just bent over in tears. They're just laughing, and they can't stop themselves. And finally, one of them is finally able to stop and talk to his colleagues and says, isn't that just like a Public Works person? You ask them to tell you how tall something is, and they tell you how long it is. That's, that's actually better. Normally, that joke takes a little bit more time to travel to the back of the room. But Public Works folks do have to be flexible. I think most of the folks on the council, and many of our citizens as well, will remember back in the Great Recession of 2007, 2008, that we had just an awful amount of attrition just because of the economic situation. So the O&amp;M folks, the folks back there in yellow, lime, and green, we lost 30% of that staff. We lost 40% of our engineering staff. And we had to completely re-envision and remodel how we deliver services and how we continue to make sure that the citizens of this city continue to live in what we consider first-world conditions. And I'm incredibly prideful of the professionalism and the sense of ownership that this staff continues to do it. And I think it's really demonstrated with, with our citizens as well. Our citizens don't complain about what our Public Works people do. If anything, they complain that there's other things they'd like us to do. And I don't know if we're ever going to get back to that level of staffing, but we're certainly going to be doing our best as we continue to move forward to take care of our citizens. And we thank you very much for taking the time to recognize us and give us our own week every year.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. You know, just, it said it in the proclamation, but, you know, really, you're the third leg of public safety. You know, because we have police and fire, and they're a little bit noisy and stuff like that. But you're the quiet leg of public safety. You're the one that keeps that stool upright. And a lot of people don't realize that. And so, you know, I really want to let you know that we do appreciate you, for sure. And I think the citizens do. You guys are the ones who really kind of are the face of the city, in a sense, because you're always out there. And thank you very much for your hard work and your dedication. So, I mean, there's stuff you do that isn't on the agenda for the day, and, and you see, you see a problem and you address it. And that's, that's what's really special about Brisbane and, and what you guys do, and gals. So thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, can I say something? Yeah, you guys, thanks so much. As a new city councilperson, I had an opportunity to go out with Dustin and a few other people on your team. And I really, really had no clue, even being on the planning commission for many years, exactly what your particular teams do on a day-to-day basis. And knowing that, you know, here we go up to the water towers and make sure that everything is running, thank you so much. Every day, I mean, I had no clue, even though I was involved. And then going down to the poop station, as I call it, I don't know what you guys call it. But it is kind of knowing where things go and how they flow and how they flow well is, is really a huge benefit to all of us. So that was such an eye-opener, you know, going out and looking around with you guys. So thank you so much for opening my eyes. And hopefully, we can open the eyes of our citizens even more, knowing that, wow, you know, you're checking the levels of pressure and this and that, and things that, you know, we wouldn't be thinking on an everyday basis. But it's like, we turn on the tap, and there's the water. We flush the toilet, and there it goes. But, so, might have been a little clumsy way of saying it, but thanks so much.
Thank you so much for all that you do. I mean, you guys are awesome. You know, every, every day when I'm in town, I see one or two of you, and, you know, give you a wave. And, but you're always busy, always busy doing something. And I'm just so impressed with all the things that you know. I mean, all of you are so incredibly smart. And, and besides just being really smart, you could just tell that you care so much about the work that you do, you have so much pride. You know, and, you know, our country, unfortunately, there's a lot of bad news, press, whatever, you know, about public employees and that they're pork, or that they're, you know, that they, they, they don't, I don't know, they're, they're not given the credit that they deserve. And I tell you, I mean, you guys, if, if we were to have a model of excellent employees that make a difference in all of our lives, you would be it. And again, I'm just really proud, you know, of all the work that you do, and thank you for making our town great.
Hard to follow up on that, but thank you all. I see you out working, and I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you.
I'll, I'll keep it brief as well. Of course, you know, we appreciate the work that you do every day. And I know sometimes it's hard, after a long day, that maybe people don't see the work that you do and how hard you work. And so it's really good for us to take time just to let you know how much we appreciate your service. And one of my favorite things about Public Works is how it doesn't seem to matter what the problem is. You guys get so creative in figuring out solutions. And I think Randy's story is, is the perfect type of example. That's just what the lifeblood of Public Works is, is you, you have a situation, and you may have not ever encountered that situation before, but you get together and you put your minds together, and you come up with really creative solutions that make a difference to all of us, even though I think sometimes we, we take that for granted. So thank you so much for the work that you do. Keep it up. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. And you know, it's nice to see the next generation in here in the meeting also. So thanks for bringing your kids out, too. So we're going to move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is item B. And you can stay if you like, or you can leave if you like.
Oh, come on, stay.
All right, thank you. Okay, item B, which is receive an update from Get Us Moving San Mateo County. Come on forward. How are you?
All right. This thing's easy to use, right? Oh, yes, it is. Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. Oops. My name's Matthew Wilson. I'm with the Get Us Moving San Mateo County Initiative. It's a little bit of an extra pleasure for me to be here, because I was a journalist for 10 years, and I would cover so many city council meetings and sit in the back of the room. It was always kind of a wonder of what it would be like to address a council myself. And this is my first time doing it.
Wow.
It's off the bucket list in the next nine minutes and 58 seconds.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Rite of passage.
Good thing you came to Brisbane, then.
Yes, the big city of Brisbane. So many of you probably remember that there was a Get Us Moving presentation to you by somebody earlier this year, probably in January, February. And what I'm going to do, do you know who it was?
Cory.
Cory? I can't follow Cory, but I'm going to do the best I can. What we're going to do is give you a recap of Phase 1, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what's going to happen in Phase 2. So, as a reminder, the Get Us Moving campaign is spearheaded by San Mateo County Transit District and the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors in collaboration with cities, agencies, and stakeholders. And long story short, it's all about getting information about a potential half-cent sales tax that could provide up to $80 million per year, and would require two-thirds approval from county voters. And it could go on the November ballot. And the most important thing to realize is that it will only go to voters if the Samtrans Board and the County Board of Supervisors say so. And we'll talk a little bit about Phase 1. And what we did during this time was we mailed out 140,000 surveys. We distributed 10,000 surveys by hand. And we had four town hall meetings that saw 120 participants. And we gave 50 presentations similar to this to multiple city councils, businesses, community groups, and civic groups. We also formed a stakeholder and technical advisory group and held many meetings. I believe your Public Works director is on our technical advisory group. We also did TV, social media, we did polling data. A lot of work went into this, we were very, very thorough. And I got to say, we were blown away by the responses. We got 14,000-plus responses from people. This exceeded expectations, I'm told. And we definitely heard the transportation priorities of San Mateo County. And as you'll see, as we go through this, there's a lot of consistent themes that we've noticed, whether it was through polling or through this process. And this is a fun little word cloud we had of a lot of the priorities and concerns that people had throughout this process. And through all the comments, each word and priority and concern was entered in. And this information was given to the stakeholder group and the technical advisory group. And not surprisingly, traffic is in big letters. Now, these are some of the top priorities we got from the survey process. And the thing to tell you about this part right here is that these are the top issues ranked. This is the number one that everyone gave. And the main component of this was to have people pick their top five priorities out of 12. And the chart shows what respondents listed as their number-one priority. And right off the top, we see that traffic on highways, traffic on local streets, and potholes coming in as the top three. And then if you look at some of these next ones, you can see that transit mobility, transit travel time, and transit for commuters, which are all public transit categories, if you take those all together, that shows it as also a very large priority. Now, what we also did is we weighted people's responses. So for instance, we put a point value. People's number-one priority was ranked with five points. People's number-two was ranked with four points, and so on, and so on. And while the chart only showed top priorities, you can see that the mean score incorporates all of these priorities. And regardless of the methodology which we used here, whether it's the top score, the mean score on both of these graphs, you can tell that traffic on highways, on local streets, pothole repair, and improved public transit are the key issues from the community. And these are some of the response numbers we got from all the cities. And as you can see, we were very thorough, and there was a lot of participation across the board, no matter which part of San Mateo County we went to. But the polling, or the, not the polling, the gathering of information we got from surveys and from the website and from town halls is one thing. But we also did some scientific polling. And we polled last year and then again this year. And the margin of error was plus-minus 3.04%, and plus-minus 4.3% for the split sample. And the split tested an ongoing tax versus a tax that sunsets in 30 years. And not surprisingly, there was a clear preference with voters for the three-year sunset, and that is what we were moving forward with. And the data I will show you next is for a tax that sunsets in 30 years. So this gets a little wonky here. But this is an initial polling question. And what was done is pollsters asked essentially the same question last year and this year, and they simply asked a hypothetical ballot question. And we found that support for a half-cent sales tax for transportation funding increased from the polling done last year. And it was up to 74% from a mid-high of 60s last year. And as a reminder, this needs a two-thirds majority to pass. So being in that mid-60s area isn't quite where you want to be. 74% is a lot better. We also tested some positive messaging that would impact the support. And some of these positive messages were, "Every penny of the measure will benefit local transportation projects and programs cannot be taken, or that cannot be taken away by the state, and our local streets are falling apart, and the measure will help stop the deterioration." And the polling brought out that after hearing these positive arguments, the support went up to 78%. We also tested with some negative arguments, and these are some classic anti-tax statements. And we were pretty hard on ourselves. We needed to see how it would fare even with a lot of strong negative messaging. And this also had a strong showing. I believe it was within the margin of error at about 71.6%. And much like the data and information we gathered during the Phase 1 of the movement, we found that there are a lot of consistent themes yet again. Traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, and improved public transit, train, bus, shuttle, paratransit. This suggests that the ballot question that was tested in the survey is in line with resident priorities. And as I alluded to earlier, we did have four town halls. They were all throughout San Mateo County. We had one in early January at the San Mateo Library. We went to the coast side in Pacifica. We also went down to Menlo Park, and we went over to South City. And there were a lot of residents from Brisbane there, as I recall, because I was at that one. And again, same themes kept popping up that I've mentioned over and over again. Traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, transit improvements. But we also know there was a lot of regional issues or concerns. In Menlo Park, for instance, the Dumbarton Corridor was a big issue. Out on the coast, potholes, but we also heard bus, bus, bus over and over again. And up north, there was an emphasis on smart transit and best practices. This is also a reminder of our stakeholder and technical advisory groups. There were over 70 organizations represented. We had monthly meetings, there were input tools online. Every city and county was represented on the technical group. There were monthly meetings to provide feedback, and over 12 billion unfunded needs were identified. Now we're on to Phase 2. And this began a little bit last month, and it's really ramping up now. The reason I'm here tonight is because there's a lot of other people at another meeting tonight. So we're covering a lot of ground, trying to get the word out about Phase 2 here. And the key piece of Phase 2 is our Transportation Budget Challenge. And this is brand-new on the Get Us Moving website. It's the same website you may have encountered. It's the same website you may have encountered in the months prior. And what we're asking to do is ask residents weigh in on their priorities. And it's a chance to sort of carve up the pie and see, how would you invest all this money in a given year, or all this money over the course of the tax? And I assure you that the budget tool is a lot more interesting than this image here. But what you can do is go on the website and play around with the numbers and move them around to see how you would allocate funding. And the final expenditure plan is not going to look like this. It will be crafted, I'm told, based on a lot of the information gathered during this process. Basically, the budget survey asks residents, with new funding, how much should go where? And the most important part is that we want to hear from the community. We want everyone in San Mateo County to take this budget challenge and try it out. And it's a little fun to move the numbers around, but if you can't get on the website for any reason, you can attend one of our town hall meetings. As I mentioned, there's one going on right now. We have one on the coast side in Half Moon Bay on the 24th, and one in South County at the Fair Oaks Community Center. You can go and sort of do in-person what you would do in the budget challenge. It's a lot less complex, but I was at the North County one in Daly City. It was actually a very fun and lively group, and there was a little bit of rivalry in terms of who wanted to spend what where, but it was very instructive. And this is where you folks on the city council and city staff come in handy. I noticed on the website today, you have Get Us Moving in big, big logo on the website. So, please help us get the word out about Phase Two and what's going on, and remind people to get out there and to share their concerns. I mean, speak up now. And that concludes my very first presentation.
Great. Good job, Matthew. Any council questions for Matthew?
Yeah, you're doing a great job, man. I really am impressed with the outreach. It's, you know, that's the way to do it, so keep it up.
Thank you. It's been unbelievably thorough. It's all hands on deck. Any other questions? I could relay back to the team.
So, we're looking for November as the election date? Okay.
I'm told both boards might look at it in July, but don't quote me on that. It could be, we're saying summer, so keep your eyes peeled.
And so, it's going to be a three-year measure rather than a really long-term one?
A 30.
Oh, it's going to be 30 years?
30 years.
Okay, so now, okay.
Three would be very brief.
One place, one point you said three years.
Oh, my apologies. Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
30.
10%.
Yeah, whatever. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on, Item C, which is a presentation regarding Beland Soil Processing. And this is in response to initially, an article that was written in The Chronicle recently about contaminated soil, radioactive soil coming to Brisbane. And they specifically named out recology. I know recology representatives are here tonight, not for that, of course, but...
I'm not hearing you very well, Clark.
Huh?
I'm not hearing you very well.
Oh. Everybody else hearing me okay?
No.
Oh, really, okay. Well, anyway, this is in regards to a Chronicle newsletter stating that radioactive material had come to Brisbane, and they named recology, but staff had done some extensive investigation and is going to do a presentation regarding that and our soils operation. So, our Public Works Director, Randy Bro, is going to start off. And we will take questions and stuff afterwards, so.
Sounds great, sir. Thank you. Thank you for letting me have the microphone again. So, as you mentioned, well, and I probably ought to say right from the beginning, there aren't going to be any jokes this time because this isn't a laughing matter. It's although, I guess some people could very generously look at this as an extremely dark comedy. I'm not sure how some of these events occur, but as you mentioned, much of the concern came about because there were some news stories, and there was some speculation that either toxic or radiologically contaminated material was brought into Brisbane into either recology. There was some speculation that it went down to the soils processing facility or into Brisbane Recycling. So, of course, we immediately reached out to the property owner and the operators, and we were able to get statements from Beland Soils Processing indicated they haven't received any material from Hunter's Point Naval Shipyard since 2010. And then, of course, we went deeper into investigation of the news article that came out April 21st. That article incorrectly listed that the material was delivered to Brisbane Recology. They listed an address, which is not Brisbane Recology, so Recology reached out to the operator, I mean, the operator to the reporter. They were able to get his source material, and that's listed in the information we had provided on the website. It turns out that the material did go to Brisbane Recycling Company, which is the asphalt concrete and concrete processing company out there. There was a bit of confusion going on out there. That operator's intake form listed that it had come from Third and Evans, but when we went back and challenged the owner of that company to dig deeper and to reach into the hauling company, because it was actually the hauler that provided that address, he reached back to his contractor, and they were able to confirm that the product had indeed come from Hunter's Point Naval Shipyard. And at that point in time, the operator of Brisbane Recycling reached out to the Department of the Navy and said, hey, tell me what the heck the source of this material is and what did you guys send to my facility? And that letter that came from the Base Realignment and Closure Office of the Department of the Navy in San Diego is also on our website. They are stating that what that material was, was it was a durable cover material that was placed over some soil in what they refer to as parcel B2. It was placed in 2013, and then in 2015, they removed 40 tons of it so that a remediation contractor could go in and deal with some petrohydrochemical remediation issues that were underneath that soil. So, that's what they're stating. They're claiming that it was not having any radiological contamination attached to it. So, you know, that's not completely satisfactory. You know, you have to wonder how these things are going on. I think you have to be very concerned when you hear that two employees of the environmental inspection team out there are in federal prison. That's certainly very alarming. What we're trying to do, there's a number of steps we're doing right now. We're continuing to work with Brisbane Recycling because we want to understand how and why the source of that asphalt was incorrectly listed. We just, we don't get that. So, that gentleman, the president of that company, has an appointment with me next week, and we're going to sit down and make sure we better understand that and make sure as we consider re-extending his permit, which we renew every six months, that we have some tightened-up requirements in there so we don't have an issue like that again. Some of the big courses of action I think we're taking, the first one is we're going to do a record search on Brisbane Soils Processing. That's, we are entitled to do that under the memorandum of agreement. And what we want to do is go back during the time period. If you look at the reporter's source of the material was a document called a Report Action Contract. It's something that has to be produced under the federal circle of law, which is when you deal with super funds. And so, what we want to do is look at when material was exported during that timeframe. We want to go back through BSP's records and confirm for ourself that that material was not delivered to the soils processing site. And the firm that we're going to use to do that is Camp Dressroom-Akey. That's a civil and environmental engineering firm. They've worked with us previously on Brisbane soils processing. They monitored the soil management plan that they put into effect. They've gone out there and audited them previously. So, we've got a lot of confidence that they'll be able to go out there and do that. The second thing we want to do is ascertain a way to analyze the existing soil. I mean, we just think, obviously, because people, in one case, and I don't want to say that that was just everywhere, but certainly we have at least one data point that somebody provided the incorrect source name for, and location for a set of material. So, we think we probably also need to go out and check the material throughout the bottom two-thirds of the site where the soils processing look at, particularly when it comes to radiological contamination. So, we've reached out to Dr. Lee, who we have under contract under separation, and I'll talk about that at the end of my presentation. And we really want to work with him to get a sense of, how can we analyze at and near-surface type materials to see if we have any radiological contamination out there? And in line with that, the other thing we also intend to do is that when we get to the point where they start exporting material again, one of the things that I'm not aware of any landfill putting in as a requirement is the testing for radiological contamination. But because of this site and because of its potential for having received such, we're going to put that requirement in there, that that's going to have to be tested. So, right now, we think we'll be able to capture the at and near-surface contamination, if there is any, and then we'll put in place a plan and measures to capture it once they start moving it. Lastly, not lastly, I'm sorry, this is the third item. The city attorney is reaching out to both the US Attorney to determine their case and to talk about it with them and to see if there's any information that the whistleblowers may have provided to him. And we're also reaching out to the whistleblower's attorneys, or we, the proverbial "we" being Michael Rousch, is going to reach out to both sets of those people and see if there's any information that they are willing and able to share with us so that we can try and determine, was, were there any other deliveries that we didn't know about that we should know about? And then, the last item that's working on is, and we've heard this before, and I know that the BB CAG discussed this the other night, there's an ongoing discussion about unifying the western side of the site. So, right now, on the western side of the site, it's divided into operable unit one and operable unit two. OU1 on the north is presently under the Environmental Remediation Control of the Department of Toxic Substances Control. The OU2 on the south is under the control of the San Francisco Bay Division of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And there are many people, myself included, who think that it would be a better idea to put both of those operable units under the control of one party, and that one party, probably the most capable to deal with that, would be DTSC. We've had some ongoing conversation about how that happens. It actually, my understanding, my present understanding, is that the person who has to make that application is the property owner themselves. But I think we're willing to ask the property owner to do that and to work with them, and I don't know why they would object to that, but we'll certainly have ongoing conversations about them. I did mention that I was going to talk to you about Dr. Lee's involvements, and this is unrelated to the Hunter's Point Naval Shipyard material, other than the little work we're asking him to do to see if there's a way to check for at or near-surface radiological contamination. But the property owner has filed a remedial action plan with DTSC for operable unit one. And we've engaged Dr. Lee. He's under contract with us. And the point of bringing Dr. Lee on board is so that the city can have an advocate that is reviewing materials that DTSC produces while they're in draft format, before they get published, so that we can make sure that we have an outside professional appear looking at it and looking after our best interests and doing what we can to make sure that the product is actually, not only satisfactory, it doesn't meet standards, but it's actually the very best that it can be, and that it's very best for, it's the future uses that we're anticipating out there. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
Okay, council questions? Anybody have questions for Randy? Terry, go ahead.
When we, when you talked about future movement and soils testing of future movement, you mentioned for export, but we would want to make sure, I would want to make sure that it's export or just movement on the site that is when soils get tested. Because we don't know what in the prior years before we had some control over it, that that might be prudent to do, not just on exportation, but movement within the site.
That's a fair and appropriate comment, ma'am.
Nope. Thanks, Terry.
So, Randy, you said that Dr. Lee is, he's going to be putting together, I guess, some kind of game plan that helps us to identify radioactive material in the remediation action plan? That would be part of the plan?
So, two pieces are, sir, and I'm sorry, I probably conflated them a little bit. So, in regards to the potential material that came from Hunter's Point, we're asking him to put together a plan to identify at or near-surface radiological contaminated material there. And that's on the former municipal solid waste landfill east of the track. On the west, northwest side of the track where OU1 is, that's where we have him involved, working with DTSC as they're developing a remedial action plan at the request of a property owner.
Okay. Because I know that, you know, it was proposed that soil from the east side would then go over to the west side as part of the remediation of OU1 and OU2. So, we would have some kind of, you know, game plan in place to test that soil. I mean, we're, you know, we're assuming that the soil that's currently in those mountains of dirt is clean, but it might not be. So, is part of Dr. Lee's input to ensure us that there will be some kind of testing as the soil goes from one side to the other, if that is the case?
Well, that's actually the ideal scenario. I mean, that's the scenario we would prefer, is that they take the soil from the east side and move it to the west side. At one point in time, the property owner had proposed another plan. They wanted to start another intake operation to start moving soil in on OU1. We don't care for that for a number of reasons. We're not interested in having another processing facility or storage facility like that, and we'd like to see those dirt mounds go down so that they get back within the volumes that we had imagined within the memorandum of understanding. And I think that's actually probably also the ideal scenario for us, because when that movement's being done internally and being received on one of our sites, very easy for us to...
More control.
The radiological checking controls. And yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
Karen?
I want to break this down and really try and bring this down to the lowest common denominator, which is trust at this point. My trust level is pretty low at this point. And with all the information that has come forward, you know, regardless of whether it's factual or it's made up, or we've got whistleblowers who are now in jail, so obviously, some things were not okay. We can put all the pieces in place to make it look like we're doing our best job, but I'm going to use a phrase, and I'm probably going to use this phrase probably for the next 10 years. We need to trust but verify. And what I mean by trust but verify is we trust the information we're getting from sources we think we can trust, but we independently, as a city, need to verify by any means possible that the information that we've been given is factual. We're in a position now where, you know, all of a sudden, this bombshell has dropped in the Bay Area, and, you know, we're working with a completely different set of facts than we were even six months ago. So, how we present that to the people of Brisbane, I think is really important. I think we need to simplify what we're doing. We need to make sure that how we're presenting it really makes complete sense at a very base level. Because right now, it's this wave of sometimes nonsense, non-facts, and who knows what that's been landed on all of us. And, you know, I'm sitting here as somebody who's lived in this town for many, many years, and safety is my first priority, no matter what we do. And I'm extremely grateful that we have all agreed that Dr. Zanna and her husband, Dr. Fred Lee, are the people that we're trusting. But, you know, trust but verify has got to be, you know, how we move forward, and I'm not really sure what that means. I'm speaking from the heart, because I don't know how else I can do that right now. And all this stuff that's come forward is totally incredible to me.
Okay, Terry?
That brings up one thing for me, that we know that soil, contaminated or not contaminated, went somewhere. And we know that some soil was circumvented the system. Have we gotten a report from the Navy or from, God forbid, Tetra Tech, where the soil, where most of the soil, the disclosed soil, actually went to what facilities? And so, it would be nice to know that, because then at least the people who are researching it could see what discrepancies on their receiving is versus the logs going out and where the manifests are lacking. So, I'm not sure if we have a report on where they were meant to send this soil.
So, I do have the source data that the reporter used. So, that was in a particular report action contract that covered a certain time period. There were a couple of... There were a couple of dozen different delivery sites that were there. But again, the challenge is, does that match up at the delivery site? Because, for instance, in the one case that was related to Brisbane, that report says 40 tons of AC from parcel B2 going to Five Beatty. But then, when said material gets delivered to Brisbane Recycling, the hauler listed source as Third and Evans.
Yeah, which is incorrect.
So reconciling that nonsense is the hard part. And that's the thing that, that speaks to what Councilmember Cunningham was saying. It, it becomes a giant trust issue, and trust is a bank account. The only problem is, it's not even deposits and withdrawals. Once you make a big withdrawal like that, I think the psychologists tell you, it takes like somewhere between 13 and 20 deposits of, of good faith back to get you to the point where you believe people again. And, and that's, in some ways, it's unfortunate, because I, I tend to believe that the majority of people are good people. I don't think that 85% of the world are bad people, but certainly, when you get a couple of really bad people doing really bad things, it, it makes us say, wow, we need to look really closely at everything that's going on out there to make sure the problem wasn't even more widespread.
And, and has that list of soil receiving facilities been made public, where we know where-
It's a public document, sure.
Where the soils went? And is that something we can make available to the council or to the public as far as access-
Sure, as, as much as you want to do it, sure. If you want the full report, I don't see why we wouldn't give it to you.
Okay.
You, you could get it from the Navy if you wanted. I'm happy to give it to you. I've got it.
Well, it'd be much easier if you gave it to me than getting it from the Navy.
I'd be delighted to do that.
And then the one thing that, to follow up on, saying that UPC has filed a remedial action plan with the Department of Toxic Control. What we heard in the meeting that we had at the BB CAG last, two nights ago, I guess, was that that has not been reviewed yet, and so they had no report on, on what it, what it includes.
But, and I, I don't think they've actually filed the rap, so, and again, it, it's a long, complex process. So what they've actually done is looked at a gap analysis. I believe that's the first thing they've submitted. So they, when you use the term "we're filing a rap," I, I use it in the sense that we are beginning the preparation of a rap. And the first thing you do before you begin a remedial action plan is you look at the gap in data analysis. You look at what data you have out there, and what sort of contaminants did you have? And do we think we have enough information? And I've never seen one come up where it says, oh yeah, we got all the information we need, it's fine, let's go ahead. It inevitably comes back with, well, no, we think that this area and this area, and these contaminants and these contaminants, you need to go looking for all of those before you can even tell, because you have to fully understand the problem before you can develop an appropriate solution. So that's what they're doing right now, and it's the gap analysis that has not even been reviewed by the DTS staff, DTSC staff.
Okay. And then on the consideration of wanting to have the, the controlling agency or the oversight agency be one versus a combination of agencies, is, and this is probably a question for the city attorney, this came up at the BB CAG meeting, and while this is a presentation and not a public hearing, I did let the members of the BB CAG know that I would suggest to the council, if we need that, that we bring it back as an agenda item, to see if that is of the council's pleasure to do. And would this be the time to just give that informa, ask that question if we want to look at it as a council, or would we rather have staff do it first?
I thought you were going to ask whether or not this was appropriate forum for you to give that direction, and I was going to answer the question, yes. Then you sort of changed the question on me there.
Well, I didn't know if, if we could ask that question now, because it's not part of an official agenda, or if, and we would just get just in, direction from council that we would want to look at it. So I'm asking whether I can ask that question or not.
You can ask that question.
Okay.
Ask that question, Terry.
Again, at the BB CAG, we talked about whether it would be better to have one agency or, or multiple agencies looking at the site. It was of the BB CAG's opinion, for the most part, that they would prefer to have it under one agency, and that, again, as staff reports, that there's, the easy way to do that is to have the responsible party, responsible for the cleanup, ask for that oversight. That's something that one of the members of the public did ask members of UPC during that meeting, and they were non-committal, which I don't blame them for not saying, yeah, sure, or no. But it is something that would be the easier way to get that done, and would take reaching out from the council and staff to make that formal request. So if the, the council-
Yeah, I'd like to see it on an agenda, absolutely. I totally-
Do we have to put it on the agenda, Michael? If the council wants to put it on the agenda for discussion, it could, but if you want to give the direction tonight for staff to pursue that, I'm okay with that as well.
I would like to give that direction, but-
Me too.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure I agree with that, only because if we've got one body, DTSC, making the recommendations, at this point, my, my trust level across the board is very low. I'm not sure that I want just one group of people making a recommendation. That, that might be naive of me, but at this point, given the external and extraneous stuff that's going on, coming in from every different direction, with Hunter's Point and the Navy and Tetra Tech and all this stuff that is beyond BS, and I'm not going to pull back on my thought process on that, I'm not sure I trust any one group of people to be the, the, the person giving us information. For me, I'm like, we got to open this up again and have information coming in from various groups that may or may not be swayed by one group or another. I mean, I've seen so much nonsense in the last few years about so many different things, and, and this being one of them, I think is super critical to the welfare of the people in our area, so I'm not sure I trust DTSC either.
Well, the, the one thing, and it's not that that's the agency that would make all the recommendations.
Okay.
Right now, basically, OU one is under control of DTSC.
Correct.
OU two is under the Regional Water Control Board. And so it's getting continuity throughout the site, not that the Regional Water Control Board wouldn't have input on what DTSC was doing.
In OU one?
In OU one.
Okay.
And OU two.
Okay.
But we would want one lead agency continuous throughout the site, so that we're not starting at square one, and, and not looking at, at the research and the things that have been found in OU one or on Schleg. And, and that's sort of the reason that BB CAG had that wish, was DTSC is familiar with the Schleg log site, the contamination there.
Right.
The, how the water, the, the contaminants have spread down into OU one. And, and would have some continuity there with the entire site. As we heard in prior BB CAG meetings, we had members of the Water Board talking about the tank farm, and the members of the landfill, people representing the landfill, one saying the toxins were coming from the tank farm, one saying the toxins were coming from the landfill, and we had two different agencies butting heads, so to speak, on who was at fault. And so it would be good, in a respect, to have one agency have the continuity of the site instead of breaking it up into regions. But again, if you have concerns, I think this is something we may want to look at as a council, and, and then give direction to staff, because it's, it's something that I'm not as advised on it as some of the members of the, other members of the BB CAG.
Well, just to clarify on, on that part, too, Terry, we're asking for DTSC for OU two only, because the landfill would still be under Regional Water Quality Control.
Right. No, I understand.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to get it convoluted too bad, so we're just asking for OU two to be combined with OU one with one lead state agency. And Karen, I, I certainly understand your concern, because, you know, you know, Madison and I've had this concern also, you know, when we had our, our meeting with our state legislator. But the deal is, is it's either one state agency or another state agency is-
Takes the lead.
You know, it doesn't matter what you think or what you feel, is they have regulatory authority, and, you know, it doesn't matter what we think or do, is it's either one or the other, and that, and that's really it.
So, so we're thinking DTSC has the, the better hand at this point?
We're thinking that, and, and it's hard to just draw a dotted line across and say, from here up, you're responsible, from here down, you're not.
I get it.
And, and that's why they wanted to make it more of a continuous parcel.
Okay. Not happy, but I'm okay.
Okay. Madison?
Terry pulled the words right, right out of my mouth. No, I think it's smart for us to have one lead agency. I think DTSC is, you know, to me, that makes the most sense, to just have them be in charge of, you know, looking at both OU one and OU two, and how we remediate that. And, you know, keep in mind, we've hired Dr. Lee for a reason, and he will be consulting us in this process. On the other hand, we can't exactly tell them how to do their job. They are, they are the agency, and this is what, this is what they do. This is, they're the experts, and we certainly, I think we most certainly can give input, but at the end of the day, that's kind of one of the hard things about this process, is that that's their purview, that's their jurisdiction, that's what they do, and, and we aren't, we aren't experts in remediation. So I think that, you know, we need to obviously be paying attention, we need to be watching things closely. We have our, our experts that, you know, are going to be crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, and we can most certainly give input. And to me, I think that DTSC, you know, it makes sense for them to, to be the ones that look at both parcels. So I, I would be happy to move forward with asking staff to, you know, communicate with UPC and see if that's something that they're interested in, in asking for. I don't think that we need to bring this back to another meeting, but if certainly we feel, other council members feel like it needs more discussion, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I agree with my colleagues on this, so I guess the direction to staff is to communicate with UPC, what our wish is, is to combine both OU one and OU two under jurisdiction of DTSC. Is that-
That's crystal clear, sir, and since UPC's note taker's sitting awfully close to me, I imagine they'll, they'll have it before the night is too late.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff regarding the presentation before I start asking the community to come forward? I will, Clara, but, okay, no more. Dana, you want to? I'll get you in a second, Clara, Dana's been waiting there a while.
So thank you, Mr. Magoo. We are not comforted by a report that one falsified document from a meager cursory research to date equates to a byline of no contaminated material brought to Brisbane. I think you should look at the language that you're using and correct that. You may say, none discovered to date, maybe, but you cannot materially say that no contaminated materials have been brought to Brisbane. We are not going to accept that of the one confirmed falsified importation from Hunter's Point, that you then claim that there's no material, contaminated materials brought here. Do you have proof? And what about the quarry? If you don't think there's a problem, you're not going to do anything, and that's why I have a problem with this statement. We expect better of our elected officials. What are you doing to protect the public? What are you doing to protect the people driving along 101, kicking up the dust for miles? I saw that today. There was a, a trailer that had double wide tires that exceeded the width of the lane that the rest of us use, so they were just kicking up dust all the way down 101. Are you taking any legal action? I think asking questions of the people for whom admission of any guilt is, is not the way I would approach it. You are, as representatives of a full township of people and workers, of residents and workers, are you going to be a friend of the court on the class action lawsuit that is unearthing these issues of the responding to the violations? Are you getting any testing done to be certain, or creating any new protections for Brisbane? What has the county done on this matter? I contacted Greg Shirley at the San Mateo Department of Environmental Health, Cal Recycle, and he's not aware of the importation of these soils as a recycling program, and was unable to connect me with anybody who has jurisdiction over this potential rogue radioactive soil moving scheme. We need better representation than a casual inquiry to the Navy. We need better investigations, more thorough reporting, and at the very least, UPC should not, or whomever the parties are, should not be allowed to cut into the vegetation from sides of the mounds, because they need to do a better job of keeping the dust down. Thank you.
Clara?
I want to thank you for all that you are doing. Dana had good suggestions for doing more, but, but all that you are doing on this issue. And I had just had two points. One is concerning the rap that, that the city engineer and Councilmember O'Connell spoke about. The reason why I got up here and take your time is because I think it's important to understand that DTSC first learned that the UPC voluntarily wanted to go to the residential level, a cleanup in December, not long ago, really, and, and that there are date, recognized to be data gaps, as, as Terry mentioned. And it's, understand, they have to investigate those, they have to investigate them, analyze them, make a determination, and then a rap would be, you know, something that they would be considering. So the only reason I thought this was important was there's a, a little bit of an implication that it might be fast. This isn't going to be fast. You're talking about a year, more than a year, two years, you know, it, it just is. So if people think it's going to be fast, who knows what you find when you, when you start looking?
Yeah, we don't.
That was the first-
We don't think it's going to be fast. I think actually Randy might.
Well, I'm glad. I, I guess I'm the one who didn't, who didn't understand. But the other issue is, I've been concerned about the measurement of the soil, because I've been told before how there, you know, it's just like so much of a volume of soil per ton, and I don't understand how they can adequately determine where, if you're looking at things from width, height, and, and breadth, that, where something is. And I would just suggest that you require that they use the best technological means to determine that, so you know what you're testing, what's been tested, you know, what you're moving, that it really needs to be, there needs to be much a more rigorous way of doing this than I think it's, that's being done now. I think if you check into it, it's kind of a primitive way to do it, and it, how can it be that reliable? You think when you excavate, everything just is, falls into place? I don't think so. And so I think it's important enough when you have that much soil. And I would just also point out that you, at a soil-
And I would just also point out that you had a soil plan that, that was discussed here that doesn't relate to all this we've been talking about, about Hunter's Point, but all of the material that was brought in before, I think it's in 2010, I don't know what month, has to be tested because the Regional Quality Board determined that there weren't rigorous enough testing protocols in place then. So you have this testing you're talking about now, and you have that testing. So it would be very helpful if it were made rigorous to figure out what has and what hasn't been tested using a three-dimensional grid and, and equipment that would help you measure where you were in space. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clara. And Randy, I know we had a meeting with DTSC, so I guess to clarify, you know, I did tell Clara, and we don't expect this to be like overnight deal, so they gave an idea that this is going to take a while, right?
I believe that the project manager from DTSC thought that her earliest estimate for even having the data gap done was six months from now, and, and probably realistically not looking at a wrap for, I mean Clara's point on, I think it's 18 months to two years before they'd have a wrap.
Yeah, okay.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I've been asking about this for literally months and years, about monitoring what is going on out there with the dirt and what, where the dirt's coming from. I've requested to have manifests, oh, we don't have manifests. I requested manifests for what's going on right now at the quarry. Oh, that's the county's jurisdiction. No, it's partly under our jurisdiction. I remember in 2006 when we had the no quarry housing, Brisbane was the responsible party for checking the manifest of what went in and out of the quarry. And I am really gravely concerned, and yes, you've addressed this one specific incident that was in the newspaper that implicated the wrong company and, you know, the asphalt. But if you go back and you look at the history of cover-ups from the Navy and the amount of nuclear material and radioactive material that they have improperly disposed of for the last 70 years, we have serious issues here that we need to really look into. I mean, they've done everything from, you know, dump live radioactive material at the Fairlins, buried it on Treasure Island, buried it at Hunter's Point, and you cannot tell me that they did not bring any of it to Brisbane when it was an active dump out there. And so it's ironic to say that the soil's processing egregious error of, you know, where the dirt's coming from and no manifest is icing on the cake, but it is, in a way, you know, poisonous icing on a poisonous cake. And so as we embark on this process with determining whether the dirt that's above the level of where it was in 1984, how much of that is contaminated and where it came from and what kind of contamination is there, radioactive or VOCs or, you know, whatever, plus what lies beneath? And that hasn't been tested for radioactivity. A lot of the things that are now coming to light with what the Navy did in terms of disposing of waste materials in Bethlehem Steel and all the other companies that were in this industrial area, I think that we have it really incumbent upon us to make sure that we explore that thoroughly, as those things will come back to haunt us, including even the amount of lead that's been deposited along 101 from when we had leaded gasoline. And, you know, that's been proven to be really detrimental to, to human health, in particular to children. I, I, I am very concerned about what's going on now with the dirt being imported into the quarry, and I, I've asked the city manager about it, please can we look into this? You know, it really is, it's right here, it goes through Brisbane, it's our responsibility. And the amount of dust, I, I'm on speed dial, Dick knows my name at, at, you know, the Bay Area Air Quality Control Board. Came down the freeway the other day and hears wafts and wafts of dirt blowing over this freeway. Oh, well, it was a windy day and they just, they didn't get the watering trucks out in time. Bullshit. I'm sorry, you know it's going to be a windy day, you know, take care of it. And so I don't know where it stops, but, you know, there was a lot of pollution in the Bay Area, Hunter's Point, Treasure Island, the stuff they dumped at the Fairlins. We have incredibly high breast cancer rates in the Bay Area, and now it's becoming really clear why. And we need full disclosure, not just the information that we got from one report that the reporter found, but full disclosure and tying all these pieces together. And Brisbane's a small entity to demand that, but every single city who received dirt, every single city or every single facility that was involved needs to get together and have a class action about it. And, and I know Randy talked about testing the at or near service contamination for radiological issues, but there's a lot of dirt there that's been piled there for a long time, and, you know, the half-life of the radio, of the radioactive materials is a lot longer than our lifetime. And so we really need to dig deep, pardon the pun, but we really need to dig deep to make sure that that's safe and that we haven't been further contaminated after what was originally dumped there. And as far as the data gaps, I mean, stuff or chemicals is a huge data gap that wasn't addressed in the EIR, and that's in OU two, you know? So we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I, I know you guys are under a huge amount of pressure from the state and from the people who know nothing about what lies beneath there and who think, oh, open field, brownfield, let's, let's build, you know, but we have a responsibility to the future. And I don't want to see it, you know, I don't want to see, you don't want to see people poisoned. So I know you'll do your job the best you can, but we really need to look at all of it, including what's going on in the quarry right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Kate, anybody else wish to address the council on this? Let's see, Kate, not seeing any takers, all right, so let's move on to the consent calendar.
I have one more comment.
Oh, go ahead.
And this is actually, you know, Terry can elaborate on this if she, if she wants to, but this is something that she brought up at the BB CAG meeting, and I think it's a really good point. Yeah, I'm not an expert on testing soil, so, you know, I don't, I don't know the means of how you go about that, but one thing that Terry did suggest is that anytime soil is moved, because there's been, you know, discussion that soil's going to get moved to OU one from the dump area, from the, from, from the mountain of, of dirt. And she had mentioned it's really important because we may not be able to test all of what's in that soil right now because it's all compacted on top of each other, but anytime soil is moved anywhere, then that, all those truckloads need to be tested to ensure as you start, you know, moving the soil off of the site, then it, I don't, I don't know in soil testing, like, how deep you can go, but that, obviously, we know that that, that hill is quite large at this point. So it may be smart for us to implement something that really takes a look at anytime soil's moved, that we make sure that it is tested so that everyone has peace of mind and we can catch something right away just in case something was imported and it was marked incorrectly. And who knows, you know, with what's going, what's been going on, it's a possibility that that's happened and somebody just mismarked where the original site that that dirt came from was. So I think that's one way that we might be able to address some of this in terms of testing. So I don't know, that was your idea. I didn't know if you were going to say it, so.
Well, I briefly touched on it earlier, you know, during Randy's report, and again, there's no way we're going to sift through it all and say what's safe in that dirt at this point. There's no way to check it all, that I know of. You know, we don't have a magic wand, so we just have to be proactive going forward with what we've got on the ground right now.
Right, and that's what, and that's what is, staff is putting together. I mean, we got two consultants on board, plus the data requests that we're getting from the Navy. We're going to compile everything, you know, and, you know, it's going to create questions. So, you know, it's, we've got to start somewhere. And so, you know, I guess addressing to you, Michelle, is that, you know, we are going through that process, and it's, it's going to be very time-consuming, and, and, you know, this isn't something that we really expected to happen, you know, you know, and the landfill area where the Brisbane dirt soil operation is, that they changed operators in 2010, was it, Randy, 2010?
Yes, sir, 2010.
And there we started putting measures in place as to them tracking what's coming in, and there's a whole operating procedure that, you know, we put together, and that's kind of been a living document in a sense, and looks like we're going to be adding more to that. And we've had environmental consultants, you know, who do the audits on that when we request it, so that's part of it. But the stuff that came in prior to 2010, Clara, as you indicated, has not been profiled, and so we don't know. And so, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's going to have to happen, you know, in regards to that.
Even after 2010, I observed several trucks going in and out of there that didn't even have license plates on them. So it makes me very distrustful of whatever records they do have and why, and I do think we should be test, you know, have a regular third-party testing of all the soil that gets moved, because their records are obviously not accurate. I, I don't want to say they're falsified, but they're not accurate. And, you know, it was partly me calling the city and then the city calling the highway patrol, have them set up things to check to make sure trucks going in and out there were at least registered, because they weren't. And, and so, you know, that calls into question everything, the lack of distrust for their records. And so, you know, doing a record search, yes, it's tedious, but it's not going to be accurate.
That's part of having Dr. Lee come in and put together a plan, okay? So, you know, Randy had addressed that at the beginning, so everybody seems to kind of skip over that and one.
No, I know, I know, it's just that, you know, the distrust.
I think just, people are nervous and concerned and, you know, I, I want to apologize for the title of that article. I understand that it was misleading. I don't, you know, I'm certainly not that optimistic where I think that there's no contaminated soil that's been brought to Brisbane just because that one load was identified as being clean. And, but I understand that the title of that article was misleading, so I seek for myself when I say that, you know, I share, I share those concerns, and I, I know that it's a priority for the rest of the council to make sure that we, this is very, very detailed, very thorough, to make sure that this site is getting cleaned up and we're not just spreading the problems around. And so, you know, this was brought up at the BB CAG by somebody else who felt that that, that article title was misleading, and so I apologize that that happened, but just because that one amount, that one truckload of soil or those, that asphalt that came in wasn't identified as being problematic doesn't mean that we are then just writing off that the problem doesn't potentially exist.
No, and that article, I mean, you know, in all fairness, was, was to address the...
That look, right.
The San Francisco Chronicle article, and that was what that was really for, not to dismiss everything. It's to date what we've come up with thus far, and, and that's, that's really it, is to date. And, and that's one of the problems, you know, that sometimes, you know, you know, I've had a lot of parents come up to me, mostly mothers, that were freaked out, you know, that, God, you know, we've got all this radiological material, well, you know, we need to find out information, and that's why we put that early, you know, as early as we can, even though not everything is there. And, and so, you know, we know how it works, sometimes you get pounded over every, every little word, you know, and so that's the whole point of what the article was, was to address that one situation, you know, is, is not everybody wants to pick every little word apart, you know? So it's a difficult balance sometimes, and, you know, it's an ongoing issue, and we know that. And, you know, I've been meeting with staff on a, on a weekly basis in regards to this, and this isn't something that, you know, we expected to be meeting on, and, you know, it's sucking up a lot of staff times too with everything else that we've got going on. So, you know, we take it serious. It is serious, it's a serious situation, so.
Sorry, turned myself off. One of the ones, things that, that Dana brought up, and, and I don't know if we have any information, she asked about a friend of the court joining some lawsuit. I don't know of any lawsuit, and maybe staff can bring that back to us and get more information of what Stillworth is talking about on that. And then also on the quarry that was brought up by a couple speakers and whether importation is happening at the quarry others for their, other than for their rock crushing. And a, perhaps we can follow up with the county as to what their permit currently is and if anything has changed, because we've had a running, we're just working on an old permit at the quarry with no updates because of some future potential use. So if we can look up, get information from the county on their quarry operations permit and get an update at the, at a future council meeting, that would be very helpful, I think.
Kate?
I have a comment, Clark.
Okay.
So, as staff has, has mentioned, so UPC is moving forward with the preliminary steps for the, the wrap for OU one. And so we're going to be looking at the, you know, initially, what are the data gaps? Because we know that you can't move forward with remediating the site and let you know all the information. And thank goodness that we have Dr. Lee and his wife, you know, being our advocates and making sure that all the things that need to be evaluated are there. I'm going to make an assumption that, you know, the soil from the dump is, will eventually move over to the, you know, to OU one and OU two. And I agree with Terry and with Madison, you know, that each truckload or how, whatever Dr. Lee and his wife recommend, how we evaluate that, you know, to determine not only just the regular contamination that, that exists at the site, but also for radioactivity.
I think we're all in agreement.
No, but what I want to say, though, is, I mean, you had your opportunity to talk about it, Clark, so I just wanted to say that I'm on board with this. But, you know, you know, you made me lose my thought, Clark. But, you know, so, but, you know, we hired Dr. Lee and his wife to, to do that job for us. The, the soil that's at, you know, in those mounds, I don't trust it. I'm just going to say straight up, you know? And so that's why every truckload that leaves that site has to be tested, and that we should make that a very strong point to Dr. Lee and his wife, that you need to incorporate that into whatever final wrap occurs. And, and we just talked about, you know, combining the whole site to be, you know, overseen by DTSC, OU one and OU two, so the, the western side. You know, maybe not tonight talking about it, but we might want to consider perhaps doing a wrap of the entire western side so that, you know, if housing, you know, happens in OU one and we want commercial in OU two, we want both to be happening at the same time, and, you know, we don't want to be, you know, have a delay in the commercial part, you know? So just, just putting it out there for council consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak and not cut me off.
Karen?
I'm done.
Okay. Everybody done?
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to move on to consent calendar, okay?
I make a motion to approve, can I go, to approve items A through. I... I...
Second.
Okay. A motion of second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, all right. Okay, that brings us into swearing in, which is administering oath of office to newly appointed, uh, city committee member. So Daniel Carter, please come forward.
Woo! Thank you.
I wanna note that the spider that was there is already there and it's a big spider and he's made that commute during the whole speech. I took a picture of him earlier, he was on the other side of the antenna and he's been here for the whole process. He probably needs...
If he starts coming down, you let me know.
He's the fly on the wall.
That's a big spider, but he at least gave you something to do.
He was trying to leave.
That's Randy's pet, by the way.
Is that Randy?
I actually named him, sir, yes, he's, he's been there long enough, I think he should have a name.
I can tell he has that kind of that long hair going on too.
Oh, no. It's, and it's right behind me.
All right.
Please raise your right hand.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Daniel Carter.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I guess all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon I, which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Can we, can we announce what committee or commission he's been appointed to for the public?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
City Arts Committee, so.
Public Arts Committee.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan, for volunteering.
Congratulations.
It's actually a long process. Okay, um, that brings us to, uh, old business, which is, uh, item A, which is adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven to become an associate member, excuse me, of the California Enterprise Development Association, JPA, and consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in Fig Tree Property Assess Clean Energy, which is called PACE Financing Program. And, uh, staff, Terry, you, I guess you had some questions on this last time, the second time has come before, so have they been adequately addressed?
Um, yes, the concerns I had on, uh, resolution two oh one eight dash twenty-seven have been addressed.
Okay. Is, any other questions on this item?
Nope.
Anybody?
No.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution, uh, twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven to become an associate member of the California Enterprise Development Association, JPA.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, very good. All right, item B under old business, which is adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight to become an associate member of the Golden State Finance Authority and consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the Community Facilities District Number two thousand fourteen dash one and adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine to become an associate member of the Golden State Finance Authority and consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the authority's property assess clean energy PACE Financing Program. And Terry, you had questions on this one too, have they been adequately addressed?
I, I did have questions on this one and I, and I thank staff for, for going the extra mile to explain some of it to me and to give a better understanding of what it is. Um, I did have a conversation with our city attorney and one thing that I, I wanna be aware of is that, or the public to be aware of, is that this would be, you know, something that would go on a property just like a enhanced financing district or, um, streetscape or library fund or anything else that might be added to property taxes and that we may want to, um, make sure that on a large project we have adequate, um, developer agreement to protect the property and the city from being overly burdened by some of these underlying taxes that would add to the properties, um, property taxes that future owners would be responsible for so that we don't get overly burdened. Um, that's not really a discussion for tonight because that would need to be addressed in a future development agreement on any properties that we do that with, but I think that's something that we need to keep in mind to protect, um, the city and their financial well-being, um, on not overburdening properties with, um, financing measures.
Okay, so you're cool with this, though?
I'm okay with this the way it sits, but I think that we need to discuss that when we get into, uh, development agreements.
Okay, and there is two resolutions in item B, so it entered, uh, city attorney, could we, uh, do both resolutions at once? Okay, so it entertain a motion for resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight and two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, very good, thank you. All right, item C, which is authorize mayor to sign an agreement to award the new Brisbane Library Project Construction Contract for six million three hundred twenty-nine thousand to DL Falk Construction Incorporated and overrule the bid protests submitted by Agbayani Construction Corporation.
Good evening, once again, I, I'll tell you what, as a city engineer, I'm really delighted with, with the bids that we got in here. Not only did we get a good suite of contractors, but when you bid a six million dollar project and your three low bidders are within a hundred thousand dollars of each other, you've got a really incredibly tight set of specs, so I have full confidence in the recommendation to the, the low bidder. A little bit disappointing that the fourth low bidder did file a formal bid protest. Uh, we were not terribly impressed, uh, with, with the reasons for their protest, so we have responded to them and let them know that we were gonna ask the council to overrule them and you see the reasons why in there, so we'd ask you to take those two actions this evening.
Council questions?
I don't.
I don't have any.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not a question, I guess it's sort of a, a comment that it's, um, interesting that the contractor who did the protest had the exact same, um, issue with both the bidders as far as the technical reason why they want, he wanted to protest those bids. Seems sort of like a, a form letter to me.
He's done this before.
Been down this track before.
Yeah, well, ma'am, there's actually no value in him doing it unless he can't disqualify everybody that was a lower bidder than him.
Yeah.
So...
By a million dollars.
Not, not, not surprising that he would try and do it, it was, I, I admire his courage in, in attempting to get work for his, for his employer, but I, I don't admire his, his rationale.
Works in San Francisco.
Maybe.
No, I'm saying it works in San Francisco.
It works in San Francisco.
Yeah, that, that tactic.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anybody from the community wanna comment on this show? Yeah, okay, entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to award the new Brisbane Library Project Construction Contract for, um, six million three hundred twenty-nine thousand to DL Falk Construction Company, Construction Incorporated, sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, perhaps council member would be willing to entertain overruling of...
And over...
And doing that first, please?
I was, oh, doing that, oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am, we have to overrule the protest.
I see, I see. I'll make a motion to overrule the bid protest submitted by Agbayani Construction Corporation.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then...
Okay, go ahead.
And then I will make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement to award, um, the construction contract to DL Falk Construction Incorporated.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second and a half of a third, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. All right, new business, item A, San Bruno Mountain Watch Civic Garden Proposal.
Good evening, once again, I am nothing more than the conduit by which Ariel gets to come up and speak to you about this proposal, so I'll turn right over to Ariel. Thank you.
How are you?
Very well, thank you. So, good evening, uh, mayor and city council members. I'd like to start, um, in honor of the week of public works, I'd like to start by thanking, um, Public Works Director and City Engineer Randy Bro and Public Works Team Leader, um, Joe Friars and Keegan Black, who provided a lot of feedback and guidance on this proposal. So, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank city clerk Ingrid Pethia for helping, um, me throughout this process of submitting this proposal. Um, I'm excited to present to you today the idea of a San Bruno Mountain Civic Garden and to ask for your support, uh, for this landscape that I really believe would be an expression of Brisbane's dedication to, um, and love for San Bruno Mountain, um, dedication to the environment and love for San Bruno Mountain and, and I don't wanna throw out those words without actually, um, you know, without having them lose their meaning. I really, um, you know, do believe that I've seen so much how, how much the city of Brisbane, the people here, um, and the staff care for the mountain and for the local environment and so I wanna start off with that, with seeing how I've been able to witness that firsthand. Um, I appreciated the partnership with the city of Brisbane Parks and Rec last summer and being able to host the San Bruno Mountain Mountaineers Camp where local youth were able to express their excitement and joy for being outside on the mountain through art and through exploration in a really lovely, uh, camp setting. Um, here we are making a self-portrait using mountain material to say that, you know, we are part of the mountain, the mountain is part of us. Um, I've also loved seeing how many people come out in the city of Brisbane to days like Habitat Restoration. This was here at Costaños Canyon recently in February for a really fun, uh, planting day to beautify the entrance of that canyon, which in the past had been all ivy. And also how excited people are and how much support, um, the council, staff and the people of Brisbane have expressed for not just being involved in restoring the environment directly, um, on the greener parts of San Bruno Mountain, but also taking responsibility for the mountains' historical environments like this valley in which we're in right now. At one point, a landscape of salt marsh and grassland and creeks, but today industrial park of warehouses and parking lots, but, um, the support we received for creating a native plant garden to bring back, um, some of the native plants that were once found in this valley and make it an educational space has been really, um, inspiring and I'm grateful for that. And I'm here today to talk, um, here are some students from the local middle school who were able to partake in that project, um, due to your support, so thank you again. And today I'm here to talk about a new education program that I've been, um, really excited about during this past year. I partnered with a teacher, Holly Rios, from middle school to, um, submit a grant to the San Mateo County Office of Education, which we received, um, last fall and our idea was to engage, uh, local youth, um, in the concept of native plants and have them learn about native plants on San Bruno Mountain through a whole suite of different angles. Um, this angle was how native plants can be beneficial in habitat restoration. Here we have students who came out on what was a rainy day to plant nearly five hundred host nectar plants that benefit the endangered Mission Blue Butterfly and the Clippy Silver Spot at Buckeye Canyon. Um, another part of the project was to have students understand, uh, the environment in which native plants can grow, um, thrive or not, not thrive as much. And so we did an experiment in which we used garden beds at the school to create different types of, uh, soil mixes using sand to create different textures of soil and different experimental plots, teaching youth about the scientific process and then having them be involved in setting up the experimental design, uh, mixing the sand themselves, um, and also planting the plots, uh, with different species of mountain plants and taking measurements, quantitative measurements to assess, um, how those plants would grow over time, so this was at the beginning of the experiment. Um, the other idea was thinking about not just having the students think about plants in a quantitative fashion and thinking about their environment and their values habitat, but also how native plants could provide value in an urban setting and thinking about native plants in a horticultural fashion. And so here we had students who, um, and this ties into the proposal that I'm, that I'm going to talk about more in depth, but here we had students coming out to the Mission Blue Nursery where we grow all plants native to San Bruno Mountain and they were each given a data sheet to look at each individual plant, one student per plant, and analyze this plant through a whole suite of different qualitative traits. Those traits involved the growth form and shape, um, the texture and sensation they got from those plants, uh, the color, the fragrance and just in general, you know, their general interest in it, did it captivate them? Um, you know, often we hear about native plants being used in projects and, you know, people get the sense that it's beneficial, but really wanted the youth to think about that more critically and more in depth, in depth and think about what is it about these native plants and what value would they bring to our local cities? Um, and so our idea was to have local youth, um, analyze different plants, um, that could be used in a horticultural setting like a city and think about how these plants could be incorporated in a really important landscape, um, in town. And so here we have, um, a patch of earth as it was a few years back outside of city hall and as it is today, um, an empty slate, um, you know, a perfect opportunity to implement a new landscape and to implement that landscape that, you know, really shows Brisbane's dedication to the environment and their appreciation for San Bruno Mountain. Um, our idea is to plant in here a San Bruno Mountain Civic Garden composed of all native plants that are from the mountain, um, made to look in a way more formal, not a completely wild garden, but, um, a garden that still fits in within, um, the formal setting of a city hall, um, but at the same time really, um, expresses on the ground how much the city of Brisbane, uh, cares for San Bruno Mountain and feels part of the mountain. Um, and so here's the design that, um, is proposed for this site, um, and it's also apart from being a place where the students can see the plants that they're analyzing in a formal setting and be able to continue their analysis of whether these plants are worthwhile to use in the city and those analyses could then go on to advise other projects around the city, um, in Crocker Industrial Park around town. We also wanted them to see how, uh, the native plants from the mountain, um, don't just have habitat value on the mountain, but have value for our, um, infrastructure in the city. And so within that, um, landscape, there's already a swale that was constructed to help manage storm water and so our idea was to plant that swale with native riparian plants that would be able to help, you know, help the water slow down, um, infiltrate into the ground, um, and have students see that important function that plants can, you know, play a role in. Um, and the plants surrounding that, plants that really demonstrate the beauty of, of the mountain, that provide interest to people who are driving by, biking by, or walking by. And so this is the list of plants that, um, is provided, um, about two hundred and eight in big landscape gallon sizes, so when they go in, um, right away, they'll already have, um, an immediate visual impact. Um, that is a list that we'd like, I got some feedback from, um, Public Works Team Leader Joe Friar about replacing one plant cow parsnip because if it's broken, it could have a reaction that is allergic, um, so that plant has been replaced with, uh, a different species, um, but apart from that, um, all the plants there are the ones that we would like to install in that landscape and then in the two tables below that shows, uh, the infill plantings, um, the ones that aren't perennial, but that could help with, um, more ground cover and also bring in some, um, annual plans that would provide, um, interest and variety throughout the year. Um, and with that, thank you for your time and I'd be happy to, um, take any questions and, um, whether about the project or the budget, we are requesting that the city of Brisbane, uh, provide funding to allow this full project to go through. Um, we have some funding available from the San Mateo County Office of Education through the grant, but, uh, San Bruno Mountain Watch is asking the city of Brisbane to provide nearly ten thousand dollars to cover the full cost of, um, the project activities.
Okay. Thank you, Ariel. Uh, council questions for Ariel? Council questions for Ariel?
I'll start. How long of program do you, I am assuming the planting is long-term, but how long is your commitment with the the San Mateo Board of Education for the learning process, the schoolroom activities?
The grant we received was for this school year, and so, the grant will finish at this term. But I'm going to work with Teacher Holly Rios if she's interested to continue this program. Reapply from funding from that same funding source. It was the San Mateo County Math and Science Teacher Innovation Grant. So, we'd want to apply for that again, or if that grant, look for other grants that could continue to support this program. It's my second year working with this middle school, and it's, one of my favorite things to do is work with local youth on the mountain and the surrounding city. So, I'm definitely committed to continuing this effort for the long term.
Thank you.
Madison.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I love it when you make presentations, Ariel. You're my favorite presenter. I just wish you could just do all of the presentations. You just have like this, this like such calm voice and so much like, so many pictures. I love, I love pictures, so keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. That's very kind of you.
You're a good salesman.
Okay, I have some questions about the cost of the plants. These all look like, and we're spending taxpayer dollars if we're going to approve this, so I'm going to ask you money questions here. Each of these plants are $12 per plant, which I think is a little high, and that's probably your retail price from nursery. So, if we're going to spend taxpayer dollars, I would rather we get a discount if we're going to spend taxpayer dollars rather than have retail prices for things that we're going to approve to spend on our taxpayer money. I love the project, but I, I think you're asking us a little too much at $12 per plant.
Does that include planting, though?
Well, we got volunteers, right? I was asking him right now.
Oh, sure. Well, I do appreciate the concern for making sure taxpayer money is spent in the most efficient way. I agree that it's very important, and I want this project to be very accountable, so I appreciate that feedback. When we do our pricing at the nursery, $12 per gallon plant is what we've deemed to be a pretty commonplace price among native plant nurseries. I believe if you go to somewhere like Home Depot or Lowe's, you might be able to see a gallon plant for like $9 or $8. Our costs as a nonprofit are different than such a large entity, and so, I think our organization feels like $12 for a gallon is a fair price that isn't, incorporates the special value of these plants.
Yeah. So, Randy, I'm assuming that the site has irrigation all set up?
It's a good assumption and it's a correct one.
Okay, good. And so, Ariel, how long do you think that it'll take before these plants get established? And perhaps we don't have to water them anymore?
Well, I think that for the first, at least, one or two summers, that irrigation would be beneficial. It is true that after a few seasons, the native plants are able to, you know, they're adapted to the local climate and that they'd be able to survive. But the concern with that would be that, due to the formal nature of this landscape, them surviving and expressing their survival might not look pretty, even though they would. So, I would recommend that, you know, even, maybe the irrigation could be reduced over time. Maybe we could see about, you know, if the plants, if it's reduced to nothing after a few years, if the plants are still looking good. But I think the city would still, it would be in their interest to provide at least some irrigation. And I believe that that irrigation would still be less than what other types of landscape plants might need.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I'm not an expert in plants. I just got some tomatoes from Karen. I had to get all this advice from her, and I'll probably kill them anyways.
Please don't, please don't kill any plants.
I'll try not to. But, you know, no, this is great, yeah. I mean, you, you want the plants to look great. I mean, it's in front of City Hall and, yeah, no, I'm glad that you've put forth this, this effort. And, you know, always looking for opportunities to partner with the city. And that's what our community is about. And, yeah, I think it's a great project, and I'm okay with the pricing of the plants. They seem fair, because the plants that you provide are special plants, they're unique plants. And it's not just from, you know, a giant farm. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask another plant question?
Go ahead.
It's not going to be of any interest to anybody else but me. But the Buckeye, where were you going to put that?
The Buckeye tree is considered to be one of the focal points of the garden. And so, it would be at the very top right corner above the swale. California Buckeyes are often trees that do grow along creeks. Buckeye Canyon and Buckeye Creek is totally.
Oh, no, I know them well. I was just wondering where we, where we were going to put it relative to the placement of the other trees for the future, given how big it hopefully will get.
Yeah, so the Buckeye is the only large tree species that we plan for, and it'll be at the very background of the garden plantings. It'll be behind the Pacific Nine Bark. And in that sense, it wouldn't be blocking other plants. It would just help fill in the background of the garden design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions for Ariel? Thank you, Ariel. Thank you very much for your presentation and your dedication, you know, coming here, you know, taking to Brisbane and Brisbane, I think Madison put into words that Brisbane is taken to you. So, this is a two-part request here. One is to approve the proposed installation, and I think that my colleagues here want to do that. And the second part is whether or not to approve the funding request. So, if somebody wants to make a motion, if you want to tie it in together, if you're in agreement, or what's the pleasure?
Well, I, I'm happy to make a motion to include both aspects, the installation and the funding request for $9,500. I personally am happy to pay a little bit of a premium. I don't think the prices are excessive. I think, you know, I'm happy to spend a little bit more to keep things local, and the money helps one of our local organizations that gives back to us so much. I think of it a little bit similar to going to the farmer's market. Oftentimes, you pay a little bit of a premium, but you are, you're buying directly from a local farmer. You know, you're impacting their life, and so, a lot of times, it's worth it spending a little bit more for the quality that you're getting and from how it's sourced. So, I kind of think of this the same way. So, with that, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed installation as well as a funding request for $9,500.
Second.
Okay, there are motion and second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Stuart, I had one question for you. Is, do we, I know we still have the Brisbane, the Beautification Fund?
Actually, the Beautification, the Beautification Fund, we have run through the entire amount by giving a discount to water for the San Bruno Nursery. We don't have that, we don't have any funds left in there, but you do have money for volunteer projects within the City Council budget. I think this would be a perfect match for that.
So, probably would the motion include, did it come out of there?
Yep. Do you want me to say that formally?
No, I don't think so. Cliff, I assume you're second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Thank you very much, Ariel.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't mention, Randy, thank you also for working, you know, with Ariel and Mountain Watch and making that a win-win.
Yeah, we were happy to find him a spot. It's a good project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, staff reports, city managers report on upcoming activities?
Yes, I'm going to talk very slowly so Ingrid can put them up. So, there is a number of items that are coming up, and we have them in date order. So, the first one is coming up on Saturday, and it's going to be a, and you probably, Mayor Conway, know more about this than I do, but there's a Family Shine Day. And one of the things that we're going to, that you're going to be able to highlight is the number of mayors and community college district members who have gone to Jefferson Union High School. If you notice that, Mayor Conway, Mayor Manalau, may not, that's the name right. Mayor Normandy, Mayor Gonzalez, and Trustee Goodman are all Jefferson Union High School graduates, and they're going to be doing a presentation from 10:45 to 11 o'clock before it starts, and the event itself is from 11 to 6.
And two of those mayors went from BES to Littman to Jefferson, so.
Who else went to BES?
Liza.
Liza, Liza Normandy of South San Francisco, so.
The next item is also on Saturday, but also goes to Sunday, and this is a BDW. Their major, their spring performance. So, there are still tickets available, so if you would like to buy tickets, they are still there. And that's on Saturday and Sunday of this week. And then, moving on, don't forget that there is an election on June 5th, and the election this year is a little bit different than previous years, and you had an entire presentation about this at a previous meeting. But the, the City Hall will be a voting center from June 2nd through June 5th. The hours for the voting center prior to the Tuesday is 9 to 5, and on that Tuesday, it's from 7 to 8. So, you can either mail in your ballots, bring your ballots in, or vote in person on those days. And then, on June 9th, we have Brisbane Got Talent. This is a, we did this the first time last year, and the winner of this does a, is part of the Star City Music Festival, which will take place on August 18th. So, if you're interested, please give us your application. And then, finally, everybody always wants to know when the Friends of the Brisbane Library Yard Sale is. This year, it is on July 21st. So, I just wanted to get that out early so people can get their information in. And that's everything I have for staff reports.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. Mayor Council Matters, countywide assignments, and subcommittee reports? I know we have.
Terry, do you want to do it?
Let's see. It's one of the reasons I pulled up my calendar. I think since our last meeting on the 3rd, oh, we, that was a closed session, so never mind. We didn't report out on that.
The open space.
Yes. So, we had the liaison to the Open Space and Ecology with Commissioner Cunningham, I had. And I'm not sure there's too much to report out on that. We got their work plan update for the year and got introduced to our new Open Space and Ecology members and worked on that. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, the only thing I really wanted to add to that was that, you know, we do have so many new, new people on all of these committees and commissions, and one of the things that I, that I did mention was that I thought it was really important that everybody realized that their independent thought processes were really important. And was, you know, they, they didn't have to feel that, you know, the more experienced people were leading the meetings, that their, their input was just as important and their individual input was very helpful to the entire City Council, that we didn't want everybody just, oh, what she said. So, that's very important to me, that all of our new committee and commissioners, you know, feel that their independence is really important. That's about it, I think.
Okay. And then, I also attended a meeting with, with Mayor Conway, where we discussed the soils processing. And I attended a Airport Land Use Committee meeting where we approved a project that was a mixed-use housing in San Bruno and, or at least recommended it for compliance. And then, we had, I attended a local policymakers group for High Speed Rail and Caltrain. And that I might have reported out on last time, where High Speed Rails, yeah, I guess I did, that they weren't going to be getting their EIR and preferences in for their rail alignment through Brisbane until 2019 for the EIR.
And BB CAG also.
Oh, well, we discussed that pretty thoroughly earlier, but we also attended a Brisbane Baylands Community, BBCAG, meeting two nights ago. Most of those were discussed pretty thoroughly tonight. That's it for me.
I just had BB CAG because I was out of town for a couple weeks.
Having fun.
Yeah, so, CAG had their annual retreat, so during the retreat, you really don't talk a whole lot. But there were presentations in regards to transportation, you know, funding for the, the measure that's, that's going to be on the ballot in, in June, you know, the region-wide measure. Also, the, you know, the presentation that was given tonight, another presentation, I've seen that presentation now five or six times.
Oh, my God.
And then, I attended Homes For All meeting, and during that, that meeting, they, they showcased these four pilot projects that the county had partnered with four cities where, you know, trying to identify community values in a way that gets the citizens to embrace housing. Sometimes, it's, you know, that fear of increasing the population and quality of life is, is, is hard. I mean, it's hard, it's been hard for us, it's hard for all cities. And so, they've taken a different approach and, you know, really trying to identify, what are the values? What do you, what do you really like about your city? And then, how do you then take that and apply it to these four projects that, that the county provided some financial assistance in regards to planning for them?
And then, we had a two-by-two school district.
Okay, yes, right. That was, that was, we did have that in between the last couple of meetings.
Very bottom there.
Okay. Do you want me to read it, or, I mean, I could, or I could talk about it.
Yeah, just go ahead and talk about it.
Okay, so, yeah, you know, I mean, as you know, we have an excellent relationship with our school district, and we partner in many various facets in town. We talked about, you know, the after-school programs, the helping to upkeep the fields. And then, we did talk about our after-school program at BES and moving that project forward. They were very excited about it. And, you know, just keeping the lines of communication open in regards to, you know, how it's managed. You know, the superintendent, he was, he was, you know, he likes the model that's at Littman and, you know, was encouraged to perhaps have something like that potentially in the future. And then, we also talked about, you know, the potential of having people living out in the Baylands and, and, you know, what impacts that has on the student population and that we should start, you know, thinking about that. And the school board, or those two members and the superintendent, agreed that we should be doing that and that we should be reaching out to the other school districts and trying to start that discussion and what, what would be the best conditions for the children and for. for the children and for connecting our communities? If, you know, if we do move forward with housing, what's the best way to connect our two communities to be one community? And connecting through the school district is, is one of those ways that you do it. When you look at the ridge, now the ridge in central Brisbane became more integrated, you know, the school district had an important role to play in, in that, in that aspect. So, yeah, that's, you know, that's what we talked about. That was very, very, very productive, positive. Did I cover everything, Clark?
Yeah, pretty much.
Can I say one more thing?
You have one more? Okay.
Just before we go and, and I, I brought this up individually, and, and we did bring this up at our meeting. The, the state is considering banning rat poisons in California. Personally, I'm 100% on board with that, and this did come up in our meeting. We, we had one of our beloved red-tailed hawks pick up a bait in the last couple of months. She lived behind my home with a partner friend, I'm not sure, mother-daughter, father-son, whatever they were. That bird is, is really seriously missed in the community of, of animals behind my home. The, the remaining hawk that is there is, is very distressed. And the idea of banning rat poisons in Brisbane is, is, is very appealing. However, I, I don't think we can actually enforce it, but if we can do an educational outreach, and I know Carolyn put some stuff out when I, you know, put my, my comments to her about this in the beginning, if we can educate people and how we, we educate people on these kind of items is in every way possible, as often as possible. And, you know, quite often people are asking me even from staff, you know, how, what's the best way of doing this? My perspective is, in every way possible, as often as possible, because we forget. And I've seen several more dead animals in the last few weeks that don't appear to have been hit by cars or anything else. And, you know, if you find a, a cat that is prone in the middle of the street that doesn't appear to have been hit by a car, possibly it's eaten a rat that's eaten a rat poison. So if we can start an educational campaign within Brisbane about these kind of poisons and the unintended consequences, if we bring it to the attention of the parents that it could be their kids who picks up something as well, I, I would totally be on board with, with moving forward with something like that.
Karen, do you know if Billy sells rat poison?
I don't, but we can encourage him not to if he does.
Yeah, yeah.
He does.
Does he? Yeah, it would be nice to encourage him not to, because we, we do give Billy a lot of work. It'd be nice, you know?
You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways to discourage rats and, and one of the biggest ways to discourage the rat population in Brisbane, which we have, from my perspective, it's just one perspective, is that, you know, all the development that goes on around us upsets the, the rodent populations in other cities, and they move. And South San Francisco has got so much going on, that rat population is moving. But what we can do as residents in our own city is clearing the vegetation around our own homes. We have, and we talked about invasive species last time at this meeting, on, on the land behind my property are 12 invasive species that are strangling out the natives at an alarming rate on the, on the, the sites behind my homes. And those include the English and other Ivies, which are rat habitats. They are the perfect places for rodents and other kinds of critters that we don't really want living around our homes to be, and they then, you know, are entering our homes, they're in our walls. There is so many people within Brisbane who are complaining about the rat population right now. So I, I think a, a big educational program might be in order. I'm not sure how we do that, but it just reminded me that we did, we did talk about that briefly, Terry. So there.
Okay.
Did you go to PCE meeting? Did you go to the PCE meeting for me last month in April?
No, I, I was going to go to it. That was a 250-page document.
So you're just like, hmm.
No, 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 no. I actually, I actually went through it. There's a lot of good information, but I bugged out on it because I had a request from my granddaughter to go to school with her that night on the.
That's more important. Okay, I was just checking because I, I.
I overwrote it.
I didn't know, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So no, I didn't. I meant to tell you that, too. I sent an email and a voicemail to.
Jan? Okay, cool.
Let her know I wasn't going to be there, so.
Okay.
Okay, any more? Subcommittee report, county assignments, okay. Brings us to our city council meeting schedule and.
We change.
Is it June 9th, Saturday? Is that new or is that?
No, that has been there for a while.
Been on there for a while? Yeah, I just must have been looking at something different.
Yeah, I mean, the challenges with all the other meetings that you've been having with the Baylands, we wanted to do, do the budget in just one day.
Yeah. So we have a regular meeting on June 7th, and next Thursday we have a closed session only at 7:30, right? And is that time good with everybody?
Yeah, problem.
Yeah, okay. All righty. Good with that. Written communications, actually had two, which is one from Ayesha Mandoff on May 8th and one from Sherri Goodwin on May 16th.
Did we just get one from Tony today?
Yes, we did.
Oh, Baylands, okay.
And brings us to oral communications, number two. Anybody wish to speak? Not seeing any takers. Okay, we're going to adjourn in memory of Clay's mother, who passed away last Saturday, Margaret Mary Riley Holstein, and Maria's father, Tony V. Segesig Jr. Adjourned.
Exciting improvements coming to elections in the counties of Madera, Napa, Nevada, Sacramento, and San Mateo in 2018. These changes will improve when, where, and how you vote. If you live in one of these counties, all registered voters will receive their ballot in the mail weeks before the election. You have three choices for how to vote. First, you can vote by mail. You can mail your completed ballot as soon as you receive it. Your next choice is to drop off your ballot at a designated county drop box. Drop your completed ballot off into secure and clearly marked drop boxes that will be located conveniently across your county. Your third choice is to go to any county vote center and vote in person. These vote centers will resemble a traditional polling place, but offer voters more options. Vote centers will be open up to 11 days in a row, and at each location you can vote in person, drop off your completed vote-by-mail ballot, get help with any questions, get voting materials in multiple languages, vote with an accessible voting machine, and register to vote and vote on the same day. The California Voters Choice Act will make voting more convenient and accessible in the counties of Madera, Napa, Nevada, Sacramento, and San Mateo in 2018. Learn more at voterschoice.sos.ca.gov.